I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, into our action agenda tonight, item one is ratification of our labor agreement with Rhodes Division, Attorney Beeman.
Commissioners, good evening, happy to report that this is the fifth of our sixth labor management agreements with our bargaining units that we've concluded. The Rhodes unit took a little bit more time to get a couple of things wrapped up, but we've wrapped everything up into a three-year contract that will include a 2% cost of living adjustment and a potential for any adjustment based upon the future salary study to be completed. So we were happy to have another contract wrapped up, thanks to Ms. Leller, Human Resources, and to Carol Braun, the rep from AFSC, maybe we were able to get everything wrapped up. So tonight for you, we have before you to take action on ratification of the agreement.
Okay, great. Lee, thank you for your work on that. Gentlemen, any discussion on the agreement?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the Rhodes Division contract?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Great, okay. Item two is a property tax credit for fiscal '21 through '22 for various organizations, Attorney Beeman.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is something that comes up every year, and this is a state authorized tax credit. It's to provide a tax credit for the Frostford Lions Club, the Lavelle Lions Foundation, Cumberland Cultural Foundation, Allegheny County Agricultural Expo, Carver Community Center, the Family Junction, Lions Center for Rehab and Extended Care, and the Allegheny County Animal Shelter. As I mentioned, this is something that is authorized through state law. Every year, these entities are required to make application to us, and at this point in time, we would be granting the tax credit to all the entities that had requested funding.
Great, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Great, okay. Item three is a M.V. Smith Road residential refuse site development, Director Patterson didn't see him.
Good evening, Commissioners. Back on June 10th, I gave a presentation regarding the consolidation of two of our refuse sites in the eastern part of the county on the I-68, one in Little Orleans and one in Flintstone. We had looked at making safety improvements, and we did an alternative analysis. Our upstairs, our engineering division, we come up with the recommendation to consolidate the sites into a new site at M.V. Smith Road for the purposes of safety primarily and also for the ability to have more space and provide a comprehensive suite for recycling. At that time, the information was vetted with our Solid Waste Management Board. Solid Waste Management Board reviewed it, and they come back and made a recommendation as well that they concurred that the M.V. Smith Road site would be a great addition to, as a refuse site. On the 10th of June, presented it. On the 14th, it was posted on the county website. Information was also actually placed at both Little Orleans and Flintstone sites. And since June 30th, and as of the 15th, we received no comments from the public. So I'm requesting that we move forward and allow us to continue to develop and make plans for the closure and the consolidation of these sites and to build a new site at our M.V. Smith Road facility.
Okay. Adam, you discussed it in detail, I guess, a month ago or so, so, gentlemen, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Do they have like a timeframe, Adam, like you know, nothing not laid out yet, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, item number four is M-N-M and D Tire Recycling. Mr. Nathan Price, Allegheny Economic Development.
Good evening, Commissioners. So anytime we can bring a new employer and new employment opportunities, it's obviously a good thing for Allegheny County. M-N-M and D, they are a tire recycling company currently in Pasadena, Maryland. They're currently sitting on an acre and a half, which they've outgrown, so they're looking to open up a second location here in Allegheny County. The McCool Business Park is the perfect location for them, as that they currently already have, there already is a 9,000 square foot building there, and it sits on eight acres, so they have room to expand. Right away, we're looking at three to five new employees, and ultimately by year three, they're hoping to employ up to 50 people as well as construct a new building on this location. So we feel like it's a low-risk, high-reward opportunity for us here in Allegheny County, and, you know, ultimately it could be a really good shot in the arm for McCool Westernport.
Great. Nathan, can the public take stuff out there, or is it just like industrial?
At this point, this is going to be industrial. You know, they're doing a deal with trucking companies. Their main suppliers are in Washington County and Martinsburg.
Gotcha. Great.
Nathan, I believe also that you mentioned that they have contracts with other entities outside of the country as well for their product.
So they have two machines. One machine breaks down the steel in the tire, they export that out, and then they also have the rubber, they can break it down to any size that the customer wants. And yes, they do have contracts outside the country, by four or five different countries already. I think it's like $5 million worth of contracts they already have.
Awesome.
Wow, okay. Yeah, gentlemen, any more discussion?
Just thank you and Jeff for all your work on this.
Yeah, that place is sitting there empty, so.
All right, Nathan, this was a good first meeting.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Great, okay. Going on to our consent agenda tonight, Administrator Bennett.
Good evening, Commissioners. Five items tonight for you on the consent agenda. Item five is surplus real property, authorizing selling property at 17110 Course Gaddin Road in Eckert for $200 to a resident. That was surplus property from us. Item six, gun violence reduction grant in the amount of $15,020 from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Item seven is the Maryland Opioid Operational Command Center grant in the amount of $58,246.48 for the State Attorney's Office. Item eight is the purchase of Public Works pickup trucks, two for the Rhodes Division, one for a recycling office, all three from Hetrick Fleet Services off of state bids. And item nine is the Solid Waste Management Board appointment of A.J. Miller, Sr., and is a two-year position, and Rob Ewen, Sr., as an alderman, both for two-year terms.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. We do have a lot of people signed up to speak this evening, so we'll start Buddy Cook and Neil Cessna, whoever would like to speak first on a fuel bid, looks like.
Neil's not here, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I want to hand out a little bit of information so I can let you see the point I'm trying to make. It's in writing, so if you don't mind, I only brought three, I'm sorry, I didn't know there were more people, but this is my first time here, so please forgive me. Thank you. Now, there's a bunch of pages here, and I'll just refer to them as I need to as I go along. What we'd like to discuss is this year's fuel bid, which Southern States and Bedford Valley both applied for, and what we think is some discrepancies in the bidding process that we'd like to bring to your attention, that we don't think makes for a fair bid or a fair opportunity to put in a bid. So, let me put my eyeballs on, sorry about that. Starting with the first couple pages, you'll see the bid for Southern States and then the bid for Bedford Valley, the first two pages, along with the totals that are posted on the website for the county. Right beneath that is the tax for fuel as well as the terminals that we provide to them. They give us a specific date, and we provide the information from the terminals we pull from. Our discrepancy is this, in the bid from Bedford Valley for the gasoline, they did not include tax in that bid, which made their bid a little bit more than $55,000 less than it should have been. In your rules and regulations, in section D.7 on the requirements, it says that you have to put a minimum of 23.5 cents. Well, that bid of 218.4, if you look at the pricing for that day, the pricing for gasoline that day was 213.8. And the reason I feel there's no difference between Bedford Valley and us is that we use the same hauler, pull from the same terminals, so we pull from the same locations. There should be no difference in price, not anything that amounts to anything. With that being said, the tax was not included in his bid, so if you'll see his number of $329,784, that comes out to 218.4. Simply with just adding the state tax for gasoline, will make that cost of 213.80 go to 250. So we feel that that bid was misrepresented, and based on the rules and regulations of that, I think that we feel that that should disqualify his bid. And the reason I say that is this, in 2019, we put in a bid for the same fuel and forgot to add the taxes for gasoline. We were told by Mr. Paul, is it Kale?
Kale.
That here was our options, either do it at the price you quoted, or rescind the bid. The bid right now is being rebid, we don't think that's necessary. So, you know, we were told in 2019 that that wasn't an option, so we did not get, you know, we did not get a chance to rebid. So we don't think that treatment seems to be, you know, on a fair level with what we should get, so we wanted to make you aware of that. There was also a rebid done in 2018. Now, I moved here in 2018, so the only thing I know about it is that it was done because of a misquote in fuel prices by a competitor as well. We'd like to know, number one, when the rules changed, and number two, why we weren't notified that they changed. We just don't think that was fair.
Well, so, we don't get into the details of this, Adam probably could speak to it. I do know we haven't awarded this bid, and it is out for rebid at this point, right?
How long was the current contract for? Was it two years up to this point annually?
So, 19, did you rescinded your bid, or you stuck with your bid with?
No, we rescinded it, because we could not take, you know, we couldn't do it without charging the tax. It was fifty-some thousand dollars.
Right.
And to this point Bedford Valley has had the contract, is that correct?
They had it last.
They were the last two, I understand.
So did Bedford Valley rescind then?
They said they would not. We felt that there was a number of discrepancies behind that in our documents, but it did sit in it. So we discussed as a group, recommended probably in our best interest to go to the money. We need to go to Dave Keeter, it's probably in our best interest to react. So, me and myself, because of the contract documents that we were prepared, we made some comparisons in that, so there'd be no question with regard to the state tax, they provide certain fuels, non-certain fuels, what to deal with the contract documents that we advertised, we discussed with them.
Okay, I guess my question would be, on the bid sheet at the bottom, it says supplier markup shall include handling, delivery, and other services necessary to comply with these contract specifications. Mr. Grace has been bidding this for several years, I know he understands the rules.
We were simply just trying to be as fair as we could be in this case, and the best thing to do was to rebid.
Even though we didn't get the chance to rebid in 19?
Well, we're trying to be, I mean, a lot of us weren't involved in that back then, we're trying to be as fair as we can be now, so that everyone is on a level playing field, and going forward, everyone will be on a level playing field.
Okay. So I guess my question would be then, if you don't put the tax on there and put the bid in, does that not make your bid null and void? You're not following the specifications that you provide, your rules.
That's why we decided to disqualify it, because we felt that there was errors even in our information as they were presented to have to bid on, but there was a number of issues.
Okay, so there was this, you're saying there was errors in our bid?
No, in your bid, in the contract documents that we put out.
Okay, because this is the first time I've talked to you in about two weeks. I received, are you the nude man?
I am.
Yeah, okay. I received a text message from Dave Keeter that it would be out for rebid. That was who my point of contact was, I haven't spoken to you in a couple of weeks, but.
Have you looked last week or the week before last?
Yeah, back two, three, a couple of weeks ago, yes. So anyway, I wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, we don't, you know, we don't feel that that's a fair opportunity for us. Please let that be known for the record.
Okay.
We don't think the same rules apply, and if they did change, we just wanted to know when.
I guess I have to ask the question, Adam, so if you go with Bedford Valley, someone has to pay the tax on it, because we can't get out of that, that's state law. Would they have to honor that price and pay the tax themselves then?
That's my understanding, and they said they'd be willing to do it. And that's where we ran it. So I understood the issue that Mr. Kale, my fellow boss, had mentioned to Southern States and the United States. And so, in the past, when we've been dealt with situations like this, and we've talked to the bidders, if they're willing to honor their price and they were to low bid, then we would award it. But we felt there's too many issues going on, and we thought we best, you know what, let's just start over, re-advertize the bid, because they were willing to honor the price, sir. They were willing to beat that box?
I would suggest that they did. I think the bid, honestly, was not done, I don't think it was done that way on purpose, I do think it was done that way on purpose, so the tax could be added in after the fuel was delivered. Mr. Grace is a veteran of this, he knows it very well.
The new contract documents that we put out for advertising right now, we feel it very clear where you have to put the state tax in your bid amount, so that there's all the written, I think it's right there, and we'll understand that through the loop of areas. It wasn't done that way before, so we cleaned up the contract documents.
Okay.
All righty.
Is it in-state or out-of-state necessarily, or are they based out of Pennsylvania? Would that have any bearing on how that is potentially calculated?
For local preference.
I understand.
Yeah, because Bedford Valley and Cumberland Petroleum, correct.
They both submitted local big preference last year.
So this bid has not been awarded as of yet, we're still looking, I understand.
I think that's all we're going to be able to get to tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We have a few people signed up tonight. Whoever wants to speak first, or however you want to do it, come on up. Jack Nightengale, Clyde Four, Mike Four, and Jim Green. And if you could just say your name and address for us.
Yes, my name's Jack Nightengale, I live at 32 Allegheny Street, Lone County, Maryland. I want to clarify before my presentation, number one, I'm not in favor of trying to force the shutdown of the coal mining question, I'm not trying to stop the truck drivers and the owners from making a living, what I'm trying to prevent is them from damaging personal property and future damage and possibly death of other people in the area. You'll see in that envelope, there's 40 pictures, they coincide with this, if you want to go along with me. I encourage you to interrupt me if you don't understand what these pictures mean, I'll explain them to you, I tried to make it clear on this paper, but they say a picture's worth 1,000 words, it's 40,000 words right there. This all started for me when I saw the end of my driveway being torn up, and I knew what was doing it. So I approached the owner-operator, he told me to get an estimate, I got an estimate, he didn't like the estimate, he came over, looked at the project, he didn't see the damage that was there, he offered me $15 to pay for a block, oh, that, you know how far that went. So, picture number one, and number two, I took those pictures on February 16th, 2020, I have to write it down because I don't want to forget anything, but by the way, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, thank you, ma'am, for your assistance. It shows the tracks going up over the curb in front of my home with trajectory headed directly over across the edge of my driveway. Note that the road is completely absent of snow due to the fact that I always clear the entire road from the top of Henne Camp Street to the end of my property line, 250 feet up Jackson Mountain. I do this so the truckers knew where my driveway was and hopefully would not avoid it, unfortunately that did not happen. It was multiple times. Look at pictures number one and two. If you don't understand, it's important to me you understand these pictures. I cleaned that whole road off. I have a Kubota with a buckle on the front, you can ask the snowplow operators for the county, and they'll tell you that road is clear. They go up, I clean the rest of it off. There's never any snow there, there should be no reason whatsoever for them to have any idea as to where my boundary line is, or where my property, or where my curb is. Photo number three, taken February 16th, 2021, showing upper retaining wall on my driveway, clearly visible, and road completely absent of snow, again, done by me to protect my property. Photo number four, taken on February 16th, 2021, showing the condition of that in my driveway on February 16th, 2021. Now go to photo number five, taken two months later, and the comparison between these two pictures are very important, so make sure you understand it. Showing condition of my driveway on April 25th, 2021, truckers have continued denied or ever drive over my driveway going so far as to blame Allegheny County snowplows and runoff rain for the damage. I can personally tell you that the Allegheny County snowplows had absolutely nothing to do with that damage, because when they go up that mountain, they leave a foot or so buffer when they go around that turn, and that's fine by me, I don't get my driveway damaged, and I clean the rest of the snow off of my Kubota. I hardly doubt rain did much of the damage in this picture. I know whose responsible damage, however, I have no proof, as I did not witness the act, and they're certainly not going to come in and admit it. Going on to photo number six, which I took April 16th of this year, and it shows a grassy knoll at the corner of Allegheny Street and Henne Camp Street, which belongs to HRDC. The grassy knoll at the intersection of Henne Camp and Allegheny Streets, I know this used to be a nice grassy knoll, because I used to cut it for the senior citizens to help improve their property. I have witnessed these trucks repeatedly going up over this knoll to the point that they destroyed some 18 inches up on it, and I know the three truckers involved, I can name them, and I'm willing to go to any court and testify against them. I know the three truckers involved in it, but they're denying it, too. Photos seven through 12, these are six photos, three sets of two, taken at three different spots across from each other going up Jackson Mountain in Lone County City Limits. The photo marked up indicates the road whereby these trucks going up empty. The photo marked down indicates the damage down for these trucks coming down loaded with coal. Look at the difference in those two pictures, one side of the road and the other side of the road, going up and coming down. Photo number 13, showing the senior citizen center at the bottom of Jackson Mountain. The small road off to the right is where the vans park when they're loading and unloading handicapped citizens when they come to the center for meals and activities. They transport clients to the facility several times a day. Imagine what would happen should one of these big trucks lose its brakes and hits one of those vans while loading or unloading. The grade on Jackson Mountain is 17.5 degrees, where backbone mountain is 16 degrees. How many crosses you want on that wall in front of the senior citizen center? Photo number 14, showing the layout of the intersection of Jackson Mountain, Allegheny and Henne Camp Streets, it has 290-degree turns in a span of approximately 90 feet. They're running tractor trailers and tandem trucks up and down that road, 20 to 30 trucks every damn day. I hope that's not permissible, but it's too late. Can't throw milk yet, I hope.
We've heard worse here, believe us.
Well, I know, but there's ladies here, that's, I'll try not to have any more slips, ladies, except my apologies. Photo number 15, taken June 17th, showing residential gas shut-off valve in sidewalk on Henne Camp Street. These large trucks have repeatedly driven over the sidewalks when another large truck is coming toward them. If the road is not wide enough in a situation like this, they use the sidewalks, simply because they want to get an extra load. The more loads they deliver in a day, the more money they make. That shut-off valve you see, the trucks actually run over the top of that and pushed it down to ground. Now, what happened if they disrupted that gas line? How about those people in that house? Do they ever stop? Can we take care of some of this? They won't even admit they did, they know. Photos number 16 through 25, this is five sets of two, taken on Allegheny County property at five different locations. Again, the pictures marked up represent the trucks going up empty, the pictures marked down represent them coming down with full load, look at the difference in the damage to the property. Photos 26 through 32, please, look at those close, the six of them. This is a tractor trailer at the bottom of Jackson Mountain navigating that turn, showing a tractor trailer navigating the turn at the bottom of Jackson Mountain and second turn at the intersection of Allegheny and Henne Camp Streets. Note the proximity of the trailer to the loading and unloading point for the handicapped citizens utilizing the services of Georgia Creek Citizen Center in photos 26, 27, and 28. That van is sitting in right there two to three times a day, loading and unloading handicapped people, going for meals and activities. They don't care. Photos 34 through 39, showing the condition of road down to Potomac Hall, and please pay attention to that, because it's going to come up later. Using an earlier strip mine operation on Jackson Mountain, as my understanding, this road was used by the prior strip mine rather than coming down Jackson Mountain. The entrance to this road is less than one mile from the present strip mine site, with a bit of work, this could be made serviceable for these large coal trucks to save county and city roads and avoid a possible tragedy. Photo number 40, this is out of chronological order, but I caught it the last minute. This is at the upper end of my driveway, the retaining wall, it shows a 17-inch-high retaining wall on the upper side of my driveway. I went to get in my truck the morning of June 10th, 2020, and saw the busted block. Imagine going over to a 17-inch wall of blocks and not being aware of the fact that you did it, and none of them did it, but my blocks were busted, but they didn't do it, I know I didn't do it. Again, the trucking companies have denied any of these, their drivers may have done this. I then had four-foot-high concrete posts installed at two corners of my driveway. Surprised, no one has run over my driveway since those posts were installed. I wonder why. One owner did offer me $15 to pay for the busted block, but I'm stuck with $1,200 to pay for my driveway. Here's how I see it, surface mine operators making money, the truck owners are making money, the drivers are making money. Lone County will be faced with trying to find grants to repair the road and sidewalk damage. The senior citizen center will be faced with the task of finding the funds to repair the damage done to their corner property, shown in photo six, and possibly of the wall. Allegheny County will be faced with funding, the funds to repair the damage to Jackson Mountain Road. I'm faced with making only a $1,200 for damage to my property. Pretty sweet deal for someone if you can get a little bit. All income and no outgo. The initial surface mining permit was issued June 7th, 2019, and was for five acres. A new permit was issued March 8th, 2021, and was for 11 additional acres. Total proved acres for this project is 72. At an average of two and a half acres a year, what will the roads and sidewalks look like at the end of the next three years for the 11 acres? What condition will the roads and sidewalks be in when the full 72 acres were mined during the next 10 to 15 years if the route for coal removal is continued? Now, what I'd like to do with you county commissioners, I would invite you to come up. You call me, I'll set up the meeting, I'd like you to tour the damage they've done. I'd like to show what they did to your roads, I'd like to show I'd like to show what they did to your roads. I'd like to show you what they did to our sidewalks, what they did to our roads. And I'd like to take you up and show you those five pictures of the alternate route they can have. There's three alternate routes down over that mountain. The last strip job below there, they never brought a load of coal down. They all went down through Potomac Hall. You have the right to limit the loads. Tractor-trailers have absolutely no use on that road. You have the authority to limit weight and size construction. That is within your power to do. And I strongly encourage you to do it. Because someone is going to get killed on that road. Mark my words. There's some S-turns up there. There's going to be people killed. And then it's too late to say, we should have taken action. And I will remember I warned you tonight when it does happen. Thank you.
Mr. Knightengale, if you would, give us a little bit of time here at the county. Myself, Mr. Beeman, Adam Patterson, let us digest this a little bit and figure out what kind of alternatives or options we have. And then we'll get back with you. And I don't want to speak for any of the other three that are signed up. But if it's all of the related issue, give us just a little bit of time to figure out what's going on and let us look into the law and everything else. We'll try to figure out an alternative for you.
What I have, I will back a little further.
And if you could, if you could give Linda or one of us your contact.
What's going on. I didn't want to sit and read all that because these general people say the issue I'm speaking on. Read them. I'll tell you one thing. Everything there is fact. It's not hearsay. I witnessed it all. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Had there been any determination why the route had been changed? I guess that would be a matter take-up with the company itself.
Well, I'll tell you what we heard up in the town of Lone County. I mentioned that. And there were several people here that heard that witness. And a gentleman who owns the land that's being stripped said, well, that'll cost money. And my response was, that's the cost of doing business.
Sir, what was the, you mentioned this was brought up at the town of Lone County's meeting. What was their position?
Well, the last meeting, the first Monday of this month, they passed an ordinance to stop the tractor-trailers. They have to read it two more times to bring it into force. And then I'm going after the tandems. They have no business coming down that road either. Can you, the picture of that wall, can you imagine how much that wall is going to stop a tandem load with 30 ton of coal? It ain't going to happen. And do any one of you want to go to the heirs or the descendants of one of these handicap people, say, well, your son or your daughter or your mother or your father was killed because we didn't stop it? I don't think you want to be faced with that.
I don't think no one wants to face that anywhere, Jack. I'm kind of a bad one to sit here. I've been down several times.
I know you are.
I went to Anthony and I got really involved after because I thought I'll just be playing. I thought Mike was going to drive Guy off of a truck and I didn't want to see Mike get in trouble. So I called Anthony and said, something's got to be done here. You need me, Creed, I'll take care of this immediately. I said, get a hold of order. Better get Jack's wall fixed and get this shit straightened out. It didn't happen. And I'm really a bad one to talk because I've hauled on and off of Jackson Mountain, intertractor and trailer lot.
As long as they're running, they ain't going to do nothing.
Pyramid equipment, cut all of it off, and a lot of stuff come down.
They're running up there 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning to get coal.
Anthony assured me he would take care of this with all you people.
Yeah. Well, Anthony hasn't had the nerve to face me yet. And I give him the
He was coming the next day and I called him, I guess, I don't know, six weeks ago when I had Dan down there.
I gave you four or five invites to come see me. He hasn't had the nerve to face me yet. So I have no respect for him.
It's an easy fix, kind of. Get your driveway fixed, get the wall fixed, and fix the problem.
It's this. That's all they're worried about. I'm worried about my life and my property and somebody else. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Clyde, Mike, anything to add, if you would?
This is going to be very brief because Mr. Knightengale pretty well handled it. My thing is, this morning, I'm Clyde Ford, and I live at 15 Allegheny Street, Lone County. As a matter of fact, I live right below Mr. Knightengale, probably about 200 feet down. This morning at 4:55, I didn't hear the trucks go up. But at 4:55 this morning, I was awakened by them. There must have been seven or eight of them. The squealing, the noise, coming down, the stop at the stop sign, and then they go on around the turn. Last week, like I say, I live approximately 200 feet below Mr. Knightengale. I used a pressure washer blown from my brother on my house. It was so unbelievable. The dirt, the grime. But if you consider this thing, put yourself in our position. These trucks, tractor-trailers coming down that mountain, all of them are overloaded because there's no scale. You can look at the truck, and the way I determine that is if you look at the canvas that covers the load, they're all jacked up above where they should be. In other words, that canvas that covers the bed of the truck, that pretty much tells you if it's even, you're at least close. But if it's above, you're overloaded. Most all of them are overloaded. The number of people that come down there, the truckers, they're all professional. They don't bother to stop the stop sign, a lot of them. Again, we're talking somebody getting killed. If you look at Backbone Mountain, it's a terrible place to come down if you're a trucker. What we're faced with is even a higher grade, a higher percentage, coming down past the HRDCC building. And do keep in mind, I would like to say, my brother is approximately 200 feet from that wall. And it's a straight shot for one of those overloaded tractors or overloaded triaxles. Think about that, sir. Because I'll tell you, I think it's going to come to pass and I hate to see it or I hate to even think about it. Somebody's going to get hurt or somebody's going to get killed. And that doesn't include the tearing up of the town property plus the county property coming from the end of the road to Jackson Mountain. You can see where it's torn completely up. Now, that has to be done by a big truck. And if you come down by, past Mr. Knightengale's to the stop sign, if you look at our sidewalks that really need replaced, but the stress cracks are evident. I pointed that out to Mr. Knightengale two weeks ago. Something must be done.
How long have they, did they previously use this alternative route that you mentioned, sir?
It's probably been 10 or so years since that route's been used. But we were down the other day. And we look at those pictures, it's wide open. And I did not cherry pick those positions. I did not cherry pick. There's four rock bars and two dips, probably about a foot and a half, which you probably had piping under, put a piece of pipe, put gravel or something over. And they run all the way down to Potomac Hall. But they've been doing this now for two and a half years.
I understand.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, gentlemen.
Jim Green, anything to add?
We will get together with the mayor in Lone County and
Jim Green, I live up at, well, I'm up Jackson Mountain Road. My only concern, my concern is with what Mr. Knightengale says. But my big concern is the 21 crosses over on Backbone Mountain, at the bottom of Backbone Mountain. Someone told me, a trucker told me that they have good bricks coming down Jackson Mountain. Good bricks. They'll never give out. But I wonder what the 21 people who came down Jackson Mountain, they had good bricks. 21 people were killed up there. And you have a nursing, you have a senior citizen facility at the bottom of this road. And there's anywhere from two to 15 people getting on and off those buses every other day or every day. What happens if they hit that stone wall? It's like a 40-pound bomb hitting the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything? Good.
Mike? Yes, sir. Mike Ford, 48 Jackson Street, County. Lived at the corner of Jackson and Henne Camp Street. We had a conversation with the town, with the mayor, prior to, we had a meeting there set up with Anthony Cole Company, Warner Trucking. Everyone showed up for the meeting. Everyone decided that it was a good deal that we would make things right.
When was this meeting, sir?
Two months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rogue was aware of it. I think he was going to attend and something come up and had emergency. Okay, I made my, my concerns very clear to the trucking company, how I felt. Since that time, those guys took it personal. I think Mr. Anthony took it personal. And I told him at that meeting, I have absolutely no problem with digging coal. I'm all for coal. But I'm not for the mess that they're making. And since that time, all those guys did in the back thought it was a joke, thought it was funny. So I started parking my car over on the street, which made it a little more difficult for them to go up the hill. One of the truckers that I have a concern with, he decided that he was going to get out of his truck and stand there and on a running board and jump up and down at me and tell me that I was going to, because of where I was parking, he was going to blow tires over his truck. I told him that I had no feeling for him. I said, you have no concern for me or any of our neighbors there. And since that time, the problem has increased. They're taking this out as a personal thing now. I haven't parked my car over on the street. I've not threatened anybody, not talked to anybody. But since that time, those guys are taking it upon themselves to make it that, to put that much more energy on their part to make it that much worse for us. Now, tonight, before the meeting, I went up and looked at Mr. Knightengale's property at the corner of Jackson Mountain. They have, the road's black. They don't care. So they're not covering their load. And it's all over the street. It's a mess where he lives. And Mr. Knightengale takes perfect care of his brother. I know there's been trucks come down there in the past, but they were respectful when they come down in the past. I know Clark was up there, Tyres Resources, they were all, they all had a concern out there, and they all did good jobs. But these people are taking it upon themselves now to put energy in it to upset the neighborhood. And they're doing it. And I don't know what we can do. And the mayor, the mayor of County was very interested in this at first. All of a sudden, we've done a complete reverse. And what I were told was told that there's, there's nothing we can do about it and we're not going to do anything about it. Well, I'm here to tell you that we've got to do something about it. I'm asking you for your help before somebody gets hurt. I have a grandson that continuously plays, actually two of them, that plays on that street. We've got kids all over the neighborhood. We have senior citizens there. And really, the trucks have, the street's only 18 feet wide. The trucks can't pass. And when they do pass, you've never seen such a mess in all your life. The congestion is just too great for that, those little city, little town streets. Now, we've talked to the town. The town seems like they've lost interest in it. And I'd like to ask for some help. Maybe he was an attorney can point me in the right direction. What do we do before somebody gets killed or somebody gets hurt? My property line is in direct line with the base of Jackson Mountain Road. 197 feet. If they lose their brakes, I'm the one that's there. I don't know what's going to happen. But if it's at 1 o'clock in the morning, and that's what time we've been starting lately, I'll be sound asleep when it hits. So I want to know what hit me with two grandkids in the house, my wife who's in a wheelchair. And it's a real concern. Now, I don't want any trouble with these guys. They can dig coal all they want. More power to them. But I think we need to find a solution to help our neighborhood out there.
This is embarrassing, Mike, because I thought that I, I knew the day that you and this driver, I really could.
I'm worried about you.
Oh, don't worry about me, Creed.
Well, I wasn't worried about you getting, I don't want to see you go to jail.
Oh, and then I'll tell you.
Because I understand this guy was really mouthy and smart with you. And I thought, oh, boy, he's messing, lit a powder keg there. I just don't understand why they directly lied to me. Because I called him and said, listen, this has got to get fixed, guys, because you don't understand what's going to happen. I said, everyone's going to show up. Land law park was done. I got right below Mr. Green's house hauling up Jackson Mountain in a truck with a gas engine and hydraulic brakes. And that son of a gun twisted the distributor shaft off. When I hit the brakes, the front brake lines busted and down over Jackson, I came backwards and shot out the tram road there about 60 mile an hour reverse. And I thought I was most scared I'd ever been in my life. These trucks is a lot different than what I was using then. But I told Anthony, I said, don't push this envelope. Don't push this. Please go see Jack. I've known Jack for 30 years. I've known Mike Ford my whole life. Just go see these guys and make this right.
He don't want to, Creed.
He made me a promise. He said, I called him on an afternoon at 3 o'clock. He said, I will be standing with Mr. Knightengale by 9 o'clock in the morning. I said, perfect. That's anything I ask. And be respectful of them. If you got damage, get it fixed. Or the alternative is going to, you're not going to like the alternative. It'd be cheaper for you to deal with these guys and just do what they ask. I'll take care of this. And I said, because there's going to be two things that will happen. We'll get involved one way or the other. If we got to put the weight crew down at the bottom, we'll request, which I don't want to do because
Oh, I did.
I have to drive the truck for 20 years. I still get nervous passing them.
And I was told that there's nothing, they have to be too, too many places at one time, you can't possibly do it.
Until it comes to a formal letter, and then it will happen. Or the Bureau of Mines will look at your permit issues, none of which he wants. Or we will have to limit the road. Which, again, that's a little harder to do than is just, than just said, than to cherry pick a road and throw a weight limit on it. Because then we're becoming punitive because it's been a coal route forever and blah, blah, blah. I don't want to see no one get hurt. So we will deal with this, one way or the other.
You stated, sir, that there were other companies that operated this before and they were effective and did not interfere with the neighborhood necessarily.
Right.
Extended courtesy and everything to the neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. But they were never, there was never this amount of trucks. Now, at the town meeting, when all the coal conditioning operators were there, they told me at one time, 50 trucks a day come out of their operation. Sir, it never happened. There's never been 50 trucks a day.
How long you lived on that corner?
I've been on that corner all my life. And so have these people. There's never been 50 trucks a day.
I've been 75 years. And Mr. Ford's telling the truth.
Yeah, it's never happened. But now, my concern is that they know our concerns. And it seems like they're doing everything they can do to agitate the situation. And we don't want this. And if anyone had just come out and said, hey, Mike, you know, we'll do our best to slow down, or Mr. Knightengale, we'll fix your wall and we'll clean up. And then they said the county was going to come out and run the street sweeper from the tram road.
We can't do that because we have to, I had that conversation with them also. Jody Ritchie on Cabin Run, which is now Swan Lake. That's their responsibility.
Well, it should be Anthony's responsibility.
He has a street sweeper. He told me he would take care of that.
He has a water truck that has sit at the base of his operation since two years ago and has never started. The Lewellens family out there, as a matter of fact, a month ago, my grandson and I were on the four-wheel, we were up at the end of Blacktop Road, Jackson Mountain. One of Warner Brothers' trucks come up off the road. When he got to the top of the hill, and I noticed the back of his truck, a triaxle dump truck, tailgate was open. So he's spreading coal as he come up, up the hill. Thank goodness I was there in time to stop him. I went up beside him, he stopped him. If he wouldn't have, he would have spread coal down past the Jennings family like you would never believe, but been another Midland situation. And I got him stopped before that happened, before he got to the Lewellens. But the roads can't handle it. The neighborhood can't handle it. And it seems as though the town, hey, I like all those guys. Don't get me wrong. But for some reason, we went to, yes, sir, we're going to do something for you. To now, we've worsted our hands. And I don't understand what's happened since that first meeting that we've worsted our hands out. That says, no, we're not going to do it. And it's from what I'm told, that the, one of the town commissioners said, no, and we're not going to do anything about it. So that pretty much goes back onto the property owner that we have, and you know where that puts me, Creed?
Yeah.
And commissioners? That means if I do something, as you said, guess who's going to go to jail?
I don't want you to go to jail. It's just, and I'm not making excuses for anyone other than I'm disappointed. I don't know Anthony Terriffey walking here. I called him on the phone. Soon as I got wind of this, I just tried to settle this down, make it right. The only thing I want is right.
That's all we want.
And, but like for the town to shut down road, anything that you've taken federal money from, you got to watch what you limit. Because when you take, put bridges and stuff in, you can't pick who can use and who can't and stuff. And that's what I got to look into for the road, to see what we can do. But unfortunately, now, the complaint's made and he's going to hate me for this. But we're going to deal with it one way or the other. I mean, now it's, we're going to have to get Lee to write a letter and send it. It is. Because I don't want to see you go to jail. I don't want to see nobody get I don't want to see nobody get killed, no one's kids get killed.
No.
And I don't like it, because it's me being a former coal truck driver, that embarrasses me that you're acting like that.
Well, you know, at the town meeting that evening, I stood in front of that meeting, it was a pretty crowded meeting, and I told them, guys, I said, "Guys, I'm all for coal. I'm all for jobs. Let's do it, but let's do it respectfully."
Yeah.
And the one guy stood up in the back, and he said, "He's telling me about, you're all against coal trucks." And I just told him, "No, sir, I'm not. That's not my point." So any help that you guys can give us, we certainly would appreciate it.
Well, no, we're going to look into, I mean...
We'll have to leave it there tonight. Gentlemen, thank you all for coming.
We'll see you for a minute.